Hello.
Good evening, Central Unified Community. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board this January 23rd, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Let the attendance show that we are all in attendance. And do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Oh, sorry, trustee, sorry, superintendent Davis.
I would like to request if we can to pull item I-1, Alumni Recognition. Our alumni will be able to make it to the next meeting and request it if we could make that adjustment to celebrate next meeting.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda with the amendment of the removal of I-1 to the next board meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Correa. We have a second by trustee Solis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries six zero. And do we have any comments from the public on any of our closed session items?
We do not have any comments from the public at this time.
If you could just wait thirty seconds.
Seconds on the board, yeah. Thirty seconds have passed and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to closed session and we will be back to report any final actions, if any, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to our Central Unified Community here on January 23, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Our reportable action from closed session on Item E1, we had a motion by Trustee Cervantes, a second by Trustee Mailing. The item passed 7-0. That's the only reportable action taken. If I can ask Vice President Creo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
Thank you. Next, can I ask Senior Lozo to join us in the front and share about our community engagement information?
Good evening. If you wish to address the Board, please call 559-276-3150 or fill out a request form provided on the table near the entrance and submit it to the Clerk of the Board prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please do so when that item is called. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may speak during the public comments section of the agenda. Si desea dirigirse a la Mesa Directiva, llame al número 559-276-3150 o complete un formulario de solicitud provisto en la mesa cerca de la entrada y preséntelo al secretario de la Mesa Directiva antes de la reunión. Se permitirán comentarios públicos relacionados con los temas de la agenda cuando se llame el tema. Los comentarios públicos sobre un tema que no está en la agenda se permitirán durante la sección de comentarios públicos de la agenda. The district welcomes other language speakers to the board meetings. Anyone planning to attend and needing an interpreter for a language other than Spanish should call 559-274-4700, extension 10150, by noon on the Friday preceding the board meeting or at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting, so arrangements can be made for an interpreter. El distrito da la bienvenida a las personas que hablan otros idiomas a las reuniones de la Mesa Directiva. Cualquier persona que planifique asistir y necesite un intérprete para un idioma que no sea español, llame al 559-274-4700, extensión 10150, el viernes antes de la reunión y antes del mediodía, o por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión para poder hacer los arreglos para la interpretación. Thank you.
Thank you. At the beginning of the meeting, we moved Item I1, the Alumni Recognition, to our next meeting so that the alumni recognized would be here in attendance. We move on to Item Presentation I2. If we can ask Executive Director Serena Dohe from the Foundation for Central Schools to join us.
There we go. I'm proud to represent the foundation tonight, and for those of you who don't know me, my name is Serena Dohe, and I'm the Executive Director. We are so excited because the foundation is celebrating its 20th year officially on, it kicks off February 4th, so 20 years in the making. Our annual long celebration includes the addition of a new pillar, more scholarships and giveaways. Plus, we are excited to officially welcome back the Granville Home of Hope on March 6th, so very exciting. We have so many more announcements to make in the coming months to celebrate our 20-year milestone all year long, so be sure to look out for all the communication. The foundation scholarship is officially upon us. A total of 17 scholarships were announced to seniors pursuing a higher education. One application will make students eligible, graduating seniors eligible for all scholarships. As mentioned, though, it is our 20th year celebration, so it wouldn't be complete without adding a few more to make it 20, right? So, we did just announce at our last board meeting, we have three more scholarships in the amount of $2,000. Full details will be available in the coming weeks, and so we're working quickly to get that out for our students so that that is available. And the awards and ceremony will take place on April 17. We did save the dates, and I hope you all will join us. That will be at the Dante Club of Fresno at 5:00. Tickets and sponsorships will be available in February, and this event sells out every year, so please don't wait to confirm your RSVP. I look forward to seeing you all there in attendance as we celebrate the award of $40,000 in scholarships to our deserving Central Unified seniors. So far this school year, since we're talking about seniors and their success, getting them to that finish line and encouraging that pursuing a college degree, we provide assistance for textbooks through the High School Enrichment Program if they are enrolled. So far, that has been 49 textbooks, ranging from classes that require one book to classes that require multiple books, from a few dollars to hundreds of dollars. And so, we're accepting applications all year long, including through the summer, and it's just been a nice relief for our families not to have one more additional item to afford, especially for our seniors, but also just helping them get a head start while they're enrolled in that High School Enrichment Program. Those applications are available year-round. Students must have the class schedule and the official enrollment to apply for the grant, and if they have any questions, they can talk to their career counselors to assist them with the High School Enrichment Program, and that's for Central Unified students only in the High School Enrichment Program. Our next event after the scholarship awards is probably two weeks after that, very quickly, is the Third Annual Golf Tournament, so that is happening on May 5th. So, please save the date and look forward to your participation in that event as well, and it will be at Riverside Golf Course once more. And lastly, I did want to say thank you to everyone who helped make the 2024 Holiday Joy Food Drive and Distribution happen. Great success this year. We were sold out completely before noon, and we loved it, but we were able to provide fresh milk, produce, kid-friendly groceries and poultry for 3,000 people, of which 1,645 were children under the age of 18. In addition to that, our T community food pantry is still operating and open and thriving, so we are open this Friday and back to regular schedules of every third Wednesday and fourth Friday, 4 to 5 PM to the community. Families can connect with their school site for more details about the pantry and other resources in our community, or visit our website, as well as all of the information that I talked about tonight is available on our website, centralfoundation.org, or you can join us at our next board meeting on March 20th. I look forward to seeing you all at the 2024 Scholarship Awards and Ceremony on April 17. Thank you for your time, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work you all do. Thank you. Next, may I invite up Laura Bolton, our Central Unified Teachers Association President?
Good evening. I don't really have a whole lot to say tonight. I just want to let you guys know that we do have our ratification vote happening right now, so the certificated staff are voting on the tentative agreement. They have until Thursday end of day to give their yes or no vote. We will have a response for you by Friday on how that vote went, but we're very hopeful that it will ratify, and I want to thank everyone involved in getting us that tentative agreement. We really appreciate it. It was a team effort, so thank you very much.
Thank you. May I invite up Angie Aguirre, our California School Employees Association President?
Thank you. Our chapter hosted our CSCA Board of Directors' Board Meeting here at East Campus at the PAC. They were very impressed with the PAC, the way it's set up and all the hoopla about it. Anyway, I just want to give a few shout-outs to the people who helped make it possible because it was a very big project. Jason Dunbar done an amazing job with production. Ruben Perez from Food Services set up all our food, stayed later, and did an amazing job setting up the food preparation. He's great at it. He really is. Kayla McEwen and Bradley Gumm did their magic with tech support. They were awesome. And I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Breton from East Campus, the VP. He saw us setting up Friday evening, went out there and helped us, stayed. He even went to Smart and Final for us because we forgot some things, and then we showed up Saturday morning at 6:30. He showed up with us, and he helped us set up, and then he left, so I just want to give him a little shout-out because what an amazing example of an administrator who cares about classified.
Item pass seven zero. That's the only, only reportable action taken. If I can ask Vice President Creo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
Thank you. Next, can I ask Senior Lazo to join us in the front and share about our community engagement information?
Good evening. If you wish to address the board, please call five five nine two seven six thirty one fifty, or fill out a request form provided on the table near the entrance and submit it to the clerk of the board prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please do so when that item is called. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may speak during the public comment section of the agenda. Si desea dirigirse a la mesa directiva, llame al número cinco cinco nueve dos siete seis treinta y uno cincuenta, o complete un formulario de solicitud provisto en la mesa cerca de la entrada, y preséntelo al secretario de la Mesa Directiva antes de la reunión. Se permitirán comentarios públicos relacionados con los temas de la agenda cuando se llame el tema. Los comentarios públicos sobre un tema que no está en la agenda se permitirán durante la sección de comentarios públicos de la agenda. The district welcomes other language speakers to the board meetings. Anyone planning to attend and needing an interpreter for a language other than Spanish, should call five five nine two seven four forty seven zero zero, extension ten one fifty, by noon on the Friday preceding the board meeting, or at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. So arrangements can be made for an interpreter. El distrito da la bienvenida a las personas que hablan otros idiomas a las reuniones de la Mesa Directiva. Cualquier persona que planifique asistir y necesite un intérprete para un idioma que no sea español, llame al cinco cinco nueve dos siete cuatro cuarenta y siete cero cero, extensión uno cero uno cinco cero, el viernes antes de la reunión y antes del mediodía, o por lo menos cuarenta y ocho horas antes de la reunión para poder hacer los arreglos para la interpretación. Thank you.
Thank you. At the beginning of the meeting, we moved item I one, the Alumni Recognition, to our next meeting so that the alumni recognized would be here in attendance. We move on to item presentation I two. If we can ask Executive Director Serena Dohe from the Foundation for Central Schools to join us.
There we go. I'm proud to represent the foundation tonight. And for those of you who don't know me, my name is Serena Dohe, and I'm the executive director. We are so excited because the foundation is celebrating its twentieth year officially on, it kicks off February fourth, so twenty years in the making. Our annual long celebration includes the addition of a new pillar, more scholarships, and giveaways. Plus, we are excited to officially welcome back the Granville Home of Hope on March sixth. So very exciting. We have so many more announcements to make in the coming months to celebrate our twenty-year milestone all year long. So be sure to look out for all the communication. The foundation scholarship is officially upon us. A total of seventeen scholarships were announced to seniors pursuing a higher education. One application will make students eligible, graduating seniors eligible for all scholarships. As mentioned, though, it is our twentieth year celebration, so it wouldn't be complete without adding a few more to make it twenty, right? So we did just announce at our last board meeting, we have three more scholarships in the amount of two thousand dollars. Full details will be available in the coming weeks. And so we're working quickly to get that out for our students so that that is available. And the awards and ceremony will take place on April seventeenth. We did send, save the dates, and I hope you all will join us. That will be at the Dante Club of Fresno at five o'clock. Tickets and sponsorships will be available in February. And this event sells out every year, so please don't wait to confirm your RSVP. I look forward to seeing you all there in attendance as we celebrate the award of forty thousand dollars in scholarships to our deserving Central Unified seniors. So far this school year, since we're talking about seniors and their success, getting them to that finish line and encouraging that pursuing a college degree, we provide assistance for textbooks through the High School Enrichment Program if they are enrolled. So far, that has been forty-nine textbooks, ranging from classes that require one book to classes that require multiple books, from a few dollars to hundreds of dollars. And so we're accepting applications all year long, including through the summer. And it's just been a nice relief for our families not to have one more additional item to afford, especially for our seniors, but also just helping them get a head start while they're enrolled in that High School Enrichment Program. Those applications are available year-round. Students must have the class schedule and the official enrollment to, to apply for the grant. And if they have any questions, they can talk to their career counselors to assist them with the High School Enrichment Program. And that's for Central Unified students only in the High School Enrichment Program. Our next event after the scholarship awards is probably two weeks after that very quickly, is the Third Annual Golf Tournament. So that is happening on May fifth. So please save the date and look forward to your participation in that event as well. And it will be at Riverside Golf Course once more. And lastly, I did want to say thank you to everyone who helped make the 2024 Holiday Joy Food Drive and Distribution happen. Great success this year. We were sold out completely before noon, and we loved it. But we were able to provide fresh milk, produce, kid-friendly groceries, and poultry for three thousand people, of which one thousand six hundred and forty-five were children under the age of eighteen. In addition to that, our Teague Community Food Pantry is still operating and open and thriving. So we are open this Friday and back to regular schedules of every third Wednesday and fourth Friday, four to five p.m. to the community. Families can connect with their school site for more details about the pantry and other resources in our community, or visit our website, as well as all of the information that I talked about, talked about tonight is available on our website, centralfoundation.org, or you can join us at our next board meeting on March twentieth. I look forward to seeing you all at the 2024 Scholarship Awards and Ceremony on April seventeenth. Thank you for your time, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work you all do. Thank you. Next, may I invite up Laura Bolton, our Central Unified Teachers Association President?
Good evening. I don't really have a whole lot to say tonight. I just want to let you guys know that we do have our ratification vote happening right now. So the certificated staff are voting on the tentative agreement. They have until Thursday, end of day, to give their yes or no vote. We will have a response for you by, by Friday on how that vote went. And, but we're very hopeful that it will ratify. And I want to thank everyone involved in getting us that tentative agreement. We really appreciate it. It was a team effort, so thank you very much.
Thank you. May I invite up Angie Aguirre, our C S, our California School Employees Association President?
Thank you. Our chapter hosted our CSCA Board of Directors Board Meeting here at East Campus at the PAC. They were very impressed with the PAC, the way it's set up, and all the hoopla about it. Anyway, I just wanted to give a few shout-outs to the people who helped make it possible because it was a very big, excuse me, project. Jason Dunbar done an amazing job with production. Ruben Perez from Food Services set up all our food, stayed later, and did an amazing job setting up the food preparation. He's great at it. He really is. Kayla McEwen and Bradley Gum did their magic with tech support. They were awesome. And I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Breton from East Campus, the VP. He saw us setting up Friday evening, went out there and helped us. Stayed, he even went to Smart and Final for us because we forgot some things. And then we showed up Saturday morning at six-thirty. He showed up with us. And he helped us set up, and then he left. So I just want to give him a little shout-out. What an amazing example of an administrator who cares about classifieds. So, and we have our ratification vote Tuesday. Once that's either passed or denied, we will let Mr. Quayre, Mr. Clejano. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we open up for Superintendent Board Communications.
All right, just a couple of updates. We had a very busy weekend. I'm probably not even capturing all of our events. Want to congratulate our cheer teams who competed in the CIF Cheer Championship. Our athletes on both Justin Garza Squad and Central East Squad definitely performed incredibly well. Justin Garza received a back-to-back first place in their division. So second year in a row in Central East received first runner-up, narrowly missing the award as well, and, and also did a fantastic job. So congratulations to them. And also to our musicians who performed at the Honor Choir Event. We're looking forward to recognizing them at the next meeting. So you will meet many of those musicians. This week, our staff on Thursday is participating in an equity conference throughout Fresno County, the Central Valley, as are some of our students who will participate in a panel. And so we're, we're pretty excited both about the caliber of the conversation and the ability to share with other educators some, some work in progress and, and to learn from one another at that. Thank you, Dr. Boatwright and your team, for spearheading our, our involvement and our students' participation in that. Peach Blossom is happening this week. So the Central East Performing Arts Center has been really busy with students who have been performing. If you're not familiar with Peach Blossom, it's oral interpretation and performances our students participate in, memorizing poems and, and having different choreographed expression of, of their poetry most often. And it's, it's incredible to watch the different groups, three different mornings the schools come in with that. And we have a bunch of spellers that are getting ready because the spelling bee is next week. And so I just want to appreciate the teams and the teacher leads and our principals who are making sure activities like that stay a priority on their campus and making sure that students are involved in those activities because it really does, you know, students may not be interested in one type of activity, but they are the master speller, and they want to be in, in activities like that. So, so glad that we have those available. You may be aware as well, Academic Decathlon will be at Sunnyside High on Saturday, February third. Super Quiz is always an incredible event. And so if any of you want to go out and volunteer or participate, let, let me know, and I can certainly get that arranged. And this week, schools are participating in the Kindness Challenge. You may see some of that across the social media. Many schools have created different activities and ways for students and staff to share different acts of kindness. And so to add in to the event itself, you'll see in front of you a list of note cards. One way to show kindness or to spread it is to write a handwritten note and give it to somebody to thank them for something or just acknowledge. And so I wanted to include you in the Great Kindness Challenge with those notes. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Anything from any of our board members?
I just want to highlight one particular thing that just came to my, my attention, although slightly, actually not as necessarily as a school board member, actually as a community member in this area. We have people in our district that go day in and day out to really go above and beyond to serve our families and students. For those, especially our family outreach liaisons, there was just a particular incident that really came to my mind that where I got notified and just to show that the way we care, even, even after five, five p.m. on a, on a Friday, or whatever the case may be, I just wanted to just send my sincere gratitude for, for what we do as a district and really to center those people that really go above and beyond. I just want to thank you. Next, we invite our comments from the public. Clerk Corfón?
Thank you, President Singh. Our first comment is from Kayla McEwen.
I'm just here to yield my time to Joan Chavez.
All right. Mr. Chavez, may I call up another person who wants to yield time first? Just to speed along, thank you. Our next comment is from Bradley Gum, or Bradley Gun.
I would also like to yield my time to Mr. Chavez.
Thank you. And so now I have Joan Chavez. I don't have my, my big clock with me, so do three minutes per person? So you have nine minutes. Okay. Turn on my phone.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Joan Chavez. I am the Technology Aid at Justin Garza High School. And tonight, I just wanted to emphasize some of the points that were outlined in the letter that I sent to the board regarding technology aid hours. On January seventeen, twenty twenty-four, a tentative agreement was reached between CSEA and our district. However, under Article Five of the CSEA Proposal, our request for the hours of the technology aids to be increased from three and a half to eight hours was denied. This has been some much requested change due to the heavy need over many years and has been backed up by many of our departments, including Classified, Certificated, and Administration. We would like to highlight the demand and need for the requested hours to be changed, as well as to inform the board and community of the work that is carried out, carried out by our technology aids and the reality of this position within Central Unified School District. Throughout the years, our classrooms, offices, and schools have changed and been updated to incorporate technology to further the goals of our district. However, the more that is incorporated and built out into our schools, the more the need for specialized staff to help support our students and staff with, with the use of this technology. For years, technology aids have filled this need and provided our students and staff with the support on this matter. Administration, teachers, and students have greatly voiced and expressed their appreciation and the value of having us to provide hands-on and personal care to the technology on our campuses. Unfortunately, this value is not reflected with the amount of hours that are given to us technology aids at our campuses. Our contracts are only for three and a half hours of the day. At the high school level, the high demand and need for our services has forced our district to fill this need for seven hours. However, the district has avoided the hiring of a single technology aid for the full seven hours and has instead hired two part-time techs with alternate schedules to satisfy this need. This, however, has made the technology aid position for Central Unified a really unattractive position for potential candidates. Great candidates that we have had have smartly opted it for more attractive and lucrative options that are found in other districts such as Fresno Unified, Clovis Unified, Sanger Unified, and even Kermin Unified. Our position, our same position is full-time, much higher and appropriately paid, and is even a twelve-month job at these other districts. Students and teachers rely on technology support staff to go about their day-to-day, and in many cases, even depend on these staff to be able to work. That is why other districts have found that the solution to these problems is to have someone on-site, available at all hours when staff and students are present. And that is also reflected in the information that you may have on your desk. This just highlights and shows what other districts have done with this position and where it's at there. And these are all full-time. In order to fully carry out our job description or our purpose, we need to be on campus before the start of school and after dismissal. Certain aspects of our jobs require us to be there before the students are in class as to not interrupt instructional time. And our work does not end when those three and a half hours are done. For the remainder of the day, our students and teachers are without the support they require, and the work or the help tickets that they submit pile up for the next day, which will also have its own set of requests and help tickets. At the, at this time, we currently have more work than time to handle all of these requests for help. And once we leave for the day, we may have students with Google account issues or device issues that will have to go unattended till the next day. Till then, our students may not be able to get their work done or take tests online. With the added work of providing school-to-home devices for our students, technology aids are tasked with the distribution and collection of these devices, with some of our sites dealing with hundreds of these devices and applications. Such heavy workloads take off, take time off of us providing the already much-needed support for other issues that arise throughout the day and furthermore stretches out way too thin. I myself, speaking on, on my job at Justin Garza, I do have the opportunity to work six and a half hours there. Since my school has, due to the campus size and the sheer volume of work, they have offered me three hours of EWA hours to, to help with all this work. But even then, I'm still not able to fulfill all the work that comes to my desk. With nearly twenty-one hundred students, seventy-five classrooms, nearly two hundred staff, and thousands of devices and equipment on-site that will require attention at any time, as well as email, radio requests for help, two hundred and fifty-plus current help tickets since the start of the school year, six and a half hours is not enough for my workload. This further stresses the idea that three and a half hours is nowhere near fair for our school sites to be able to provide the support they need to function properly. Our lack of hours and pay has led many tech aides to work two to three jobs. Most look for extra work at their sites to get supplement pay or EWA hours. And sadly, with this economy, this is no longer an ideal job to just hold as, as a singular job. In fact, myself at a Step Three will currently be making less than a minimum wage employee at a fast food. With, with new sites also opening like Seals and Brawley and any other further schools, this will require a lot of work to open these schools. I was employed when Justin Garza High School was first established and opened up, and I had many conversations with John, Facilities, and others to make sure that our technology was set up and working properly for our classrooms to use. And it was a lot, it was a lot of work and time and effort into these to help set up all this. Something that has continued till year three, when we finally have all four age groups or school levels. So, we ask that the Central Unified Board of Trustees direct their attention to this pressing matter. As the longer we push this aside, more of our experienced staff serving as tech aides will sadly depart our district and take the full-time positions found in all other surrounding districts. We do not ask for our district to do something that is unheard of, only to match what other districts have done for years and to provide the support needed at all our sites for students, teachers, admin, and community. This position has turned into a turnstile for years, and every year we lose highly capable workers with already established connections, rapport, knowledge of our students, staff, community, and facilities. We currently have schools with vacancies at this position and a high school, which is Justin Garza, with no secondary set of hands. For years, our district has only trained and groomed highly capable technology support staff only for them to continuously depart to other districts and for those districts to reap the fruits or benefit from that. We would like our district to have more continuity at this position, knowing that this will benefit our school sites and allow them to function more efficiently. I have compiled information which is available to the public with a few searches on their other school districts' websites, which is what you guys have in front of you. The, the Google Sheet that I made has the links that, to show all these job descriptions and also their salary schematics. And I'm more than willing to share this with you guys so that way you guys have this as evidence as to what goes on around at other districts. So yeah, so I would be more than happy to provide this information to you guys. And once again, thank you for your time. I know it's quite a bit of time, but this has been something that we've been very patient about, and we've been wanting our district to kind of take care of and handle with their, in their own hands. But because of this tentative agreement that came out, we just kind of wanted to speak out and, and make our voices heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for sending the email, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Our next comment is from Andrea Gray. The timer will start whenever you're ready.
I actually came for two reasons, and they're highlighted on there. The first one is dual enrollment. I was here a year ago, January two thousand twenty-three, asking about dual enrollment for Garza, advocating for it. And Garza was assigned two dual enrollment classes. Central was assigned seventeen, and East was assigned four. At the time, Central had eight hundred students. Now they're down to six hundred students, and they're slated to have nineteen dual enrollment classes. I would obviously like that to be distributed more evenly across the district. And then my question on there is, could we get an update on how many dual enrollment classes will be offered at each of the high school campuses? And then can that be sent out through Parent Square so that all parents are aware of how many dual enrollment classes are being offered and whether or not that's equitable across the district? The second reason I'm here is because I feel like my son is being denied an educational service that has been offered in the past, and that is elementary gate field trip. All of my kids have been in gate. My two older kids, when they were in elementary school, went on a gate field trip every year to places like the Reagan Library, Exploratorium. And now my youngest son, who's in sixth grade, has been in gate for four years and has not gone on a gate field trip. I understand the first two years were due to COVID, but in fifth grade, regular classroom field trips started. Liddell sent kids to Monterey Bay Aquarium and San Juan Batista, and yet no gate field trip. I contacted his gate teacher. I also contacted the Assistant Director of Educational Services, and I was told due to COVID, there would be no gate field trip. Well, that was hard to swallow, being that classroom field trips picked back up again. This year, the half the year went by, no gate field trip. I contacted his gate teacher. I contacted the direct, the Assistant Director of Educational Services. I was told that organization, busing, and cost was not worthwhile to have a gate field trip. I was also told by that director or the Assistant Director of Educational Services that he had too much on his plate to organize a gate field trip. I'm super disappointed by this because my kids always enjoyed that gate field trip. It was a highlight of being in gate. And I know I've mentioned this before, but my oldest son graduated from Central West High School in two thousand twenty-two and did not graduate with any of his elementary or middle school friends because all of those parents pulled their kids and sent them to other high schools because they offer more resources to high-achieving students. And Central Unified lags behind that in a lot of areas. So I hate to see one more resource go by the wayside with the gate field trip. So I have three questions that I have listed there for you about that that I'd like hopefully looked into. And that is, if over the past two years, regular classroom field trips have resumed, why has the gate field trip not resumed? Two, I was told by admin that money is set aside every year for gate field trips, and yet for the past four years, there has not been a gate field trip. So where is that money going that is supposed to be designated for gate field trips?
Your sentence, thank you.
Okay. And my third question's on there. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next comment I have is from Laura Bolton.
I just wanted to speak in support of the tech aides from the teacher perspective. At the school sites, teachers and students are using technology all day long. They're not just using technology in the three and a half hours that our tech gates are present. And it can be really frustrating, especially when things like iReady testing or state testing, when things like that are happening and there isn't someone there available to help. iReady is used all day long, not just in the morning. And if we have to wait until the next day, we lose valuable teaching time. And that happens quite a bit. I also know that there are sites that do not have tech aides, have not had tech aides all year. I know Teague Elementary is one of those. They borrow tech support from the district office when they have severe needs. And they've tried to hire. They actually had someone, and then they reneged and didn't take the job. So I, I do believe that it would be helpful not just to support instruction, students, teachers, but also to attract and retain tech aides and to provide the support and the necessary technology needs that our kids and our teachers, and honestly, even admin, right? We need tech support throughout, in the offices, in the library, everywhere on campus. It's not just the classrooms, it's everywhere. So I would encourage you guys, if you can, to find a way to extend those hours and, and bring more of those people to our district. Thank you.
Mr. President, I don't have any other public comments at this time.
And again, I just want to publicly acknowledge those that emailed us. We, thank you. With that, we turn to the consent agenda. I wanted to highlight that February, the, the board is adopting a resolution to declare February two thousand twenty-four as Black History Month, as well as adopting a resolution to declare February tenth through twenty-fourth as Lunar New Year. Do I have any, do I have a motion on this?
Motion to approve the items listed under our consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Correa. We have a second by trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven zero. We turn to our action items. Action item M1, Assistant Superintendent Ikbal, accept gifts to the district.
Good evening. Today, we have a significant large amount of donation. Central High School received twenty thousand from Joseph Keith Burgess Foundation for the agricultural program. And then Justin Garza High School received two hundred from Charity Aid Foundation of America for ASB programs. Again, administration is recommending the board to accept the gifts. As a follow-up, thank you letter will be mailed to the donors.
Any comments or questions on the item?
I move to accept the gifts.
We have a motion by trustee Correa, second by trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Gratefully, we, motion carries seven zero. We move on to action item M2, hold public hearing and approve January's Quarterly Williams Uniform Complaint Procedure. Assistant Superintendent Boatright.
Thank you. So this item returns tonight for a public hearing. And then we are asking for board approval of the January Quarterly Williams Complaint Procedure.
Any comment? Oh, we, we, that's right. Yeah, so we open, we, we open for the January Quarterly Williams Uniform Complaint Procedure. We open it for a public hearing.
No comments.
We have no comments at this time.
So we will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
You don't need any formal action to close the public hearing. You would now just move to any discussion related to the item before seeking approval.
Any discussion or comments on the, on the item?
I'll move to approve the January, January's Quarterly William Uniform Complaint.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Correa, second by trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. We move on to approve school accountability report cards. Mrs. Pennington.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and members of the board. This item is returning for your approval, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Meiling.
Thank you. I just have one question. On all three high schools, on the enrollment, do those numbers need to be updated?
I believe that we had looked at that information. Did you want to speak to that regarding when those, those numbers come out? And so...
I, I think they're off. And I don't know how important that is for this to...
Trustee Meiling, I, I could help answer that question. So anything that's captured in the school accountability report card is, is twelve months in the rear. So it was capturing the current enrollment at the time when the reports were pulled essentially last school year. They don't represent our current numbers as we, as we sit today for the two thousand twenty-four school year.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, just Central, East, and, and CHS were the exact same. So I was just curious what was going on there. Thank you.
Can you maybe tell us how those numbers are generated? Because that's not something that, that we create, right? That's based on the information we're reporting, and then the state provides us that information.
Exactly.
So if you can just kind of elaborate a little bit more so that we have a better understanding.
Well, I know that, yeah. Come on up.
Can I speak to it real quickly? While she's coming up to explain, I pulled open them. There are still some that are in error. So we will do an update if we can approve them tentatively with just the accurate twenty-two, twenty-three data. Garza shows twelfth graders, and in twenty-two, twenty-three, they didn't have it. So I think we've got a couple of quick fixes to override.
Thing with DTS, yeah. So those, those numbers were just recently released by CDE, and so they have to go through a whole reformatting process. The numbers themselves come from the CalPads capture in fall, the census day. And it's, as Mr. Collegian said, it's a year in arrears for that particular indicator. So it's directly downloaded from CDE based on what we upload from ARES. And then we have a vendor that has the template available for us that has to reformat all that for us and put all the graphics back in it. So it sounds to me like there might be a formatting problem there that we can absolutely fix between now and February first before the official posting.
Trustee Correa.
So I know we're required to give our parents' legal guardians notice of these reports. How do we communicate that, and are we doing that in all languages? And then I know that there are going to be some revisions, and I'm happy to make a motion after we answer any questions. I would just request that at the next board meeting, whenever it's appropriate that our superintendent provides us an update, just letting the public know this has been updated. You can see the current information.
An update of the actual plans or, or the process?
The numbers, where whatever needs to be reformatted.
So the notifications go out via Parent Square and social media. We have a flyer that has like a shortened version of the CDE's guide to, parent guide to SARC information, to school accountability report card information. And so it's like a synopsis of what you can find in this document and where to look to get pertinent information. The, the premise for the SARC originally in legislation was for parents and community members to easily be able to compare school site to school site within a district and within a region. So it's designed to be a snapshot. It's not as comprehensive as their school plans or, or the other reporting that we might do for the state. It's supposed to be a real reader, user-friendly version for our community.
And is that available in other languages?
Yes.
In addition to English?
Yes. We, we provide interpreted or translated documents for all of our required fifteen percent schools, and even some of our schools that are just kind of close. We, we go ahead and provide that second language. Most of them are Spanish, obviously, but some of our school sites do get a Punjabi translation. Those are posted on the district's webpage, as well as the Public Information tab on the school site's webpage, and there's a hard copy available in the front office of every school.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other, any other questions?
I'll move to approve the reports with the additional revisions that need to be updated.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Correa, second by trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. We move on to our information items. Our first information item is to receive information regarding the state budget. Assistant Superintendent Ikbal.
Good evening. On January seventeenth, our fiscal director, manager, and myself attended the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five governor's budget workshop in Sacramento. I have attached a summary proposal of the governor's budget for the next year. I think the biggest noise was the thirty million dollar deficit last year and the thirty-seven billion dollar deficit next year. However, with all this noise, three important things are important for us in terms of preparing for the second interim and the multi-year budget. The first is next year COLA has been reduced to zero point seven six from three point nine four. The second is as of today, again, things might change in May. No budget cuts for educational program. Again, this is tentative. And third is no deferral has been announced. What does deferral mean? Every month, based on our revenue allocation, the district receives a proportion off of the state revenue. When there is a deferral, the district receiving the allocation doesn't get it. That means it affects our cash flow. So with the billions deficit next year, we as a school district have to make sure that our fiscal plan are done carefully and, and, you know, making sure that we have the funds to be solvent for. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Ikbal. Next, we move on to receive information regarding School Facilities Planning Committee. Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. This item is returning to you from the last meeting to continue the conversation regarding the next steps for our facility planning and the recommendation that we presented last meeting from the School Facility Planning Committee. Attached to the item is both the original report that we did share as well as a kind of an outsider's view looking in from a gentleman, Gary Jansen, who we brought on to facilitate the conversation in, in the committee. If you came to a meeting, you met him. We thought a, a party that was not tied into all of the work that we've been in the middle might be a real good objective facilitator or thought partner in that. And, and he was, and as part of his work was to provide a summary. So that is attached. We'd like to go through the questions that were raised at the last meeting and talk through those. And each of us take a little time, and, and we did provide a copy of those with you in case it's easier to, to read along with some of the questions and answers. And then anticipate that there may be some additional questions that, that we need to compile or, or if we can respond to them in this evening, we, we certainly aim to. So let's go ahead. We're, we're going to tackle enrollment, budget, boundaries, miscellaneous, and then also a couple of questions that have come up about what was the motion and votes previously in two thousand twenty that, that may relate to the new high school work. So...
Thanks. I could jump in Superintendent Davis. Thank you. And, and, there we go. Operable now. The, what, what are our current enrollment numbers and, and what are our caps? So I, I think from our previous item, this information will probably, will, will provide you a more accurate distribution of our, our secondary schools as we currently sit. So, so essentially, the really, the best way to understand it is, how are we distributing over forty-five hundred high school kids among our, our three campuses? Currently, West Campus is just over six hundred and forty students, nine twelve. East Campus is almost at eighteen hundred currently, and Garza's sitting, as mentioned before, almost at twenty-one, twenty-one hundred students. When we look at our present time today and we capture our current registration, so we're, we're specifically speaking to students who are in eighth grade right now, who are currently registering for school of choice or their school of residence. We, we are seeing an uptick there on how it affects Justin Garza High School. So Justin Garza High School essentially would gain almost a little over two hundred students next year as it sits now. East essentially flat. Numbers currently indicate that there are twenty, twenty, to be twenty students over to eighteen, twenty if our numbers stay the same. And West Campus is actually down almost a hundred kids currently. Now, those registration numbers, I will say, are raw. And when I say raw is, there are students who, in the registration cycle, have yet to make choice or didn't mark which school they would attend. Those students automatically go to school of residence. So I think in the next thirty to forty days, that will clean up. I did speak to Area Administrator Garrett before this item, and as of today, I know that West Campus Central High School has grown at least twenty more students since this report was run. I think we talked about what's important, too, is, and the, the question has come up here at the board level, also in our, in our meetings on Mondays with, with the Facilities Committee. What's really the difference between the CD's definition of capacity and what we like to call, you know, comfortable capacity at our school sites? So the CDs, in, in layman's terms, is every classroom used every period, every day. Which means, imagine, you know, a teacher has a classroom at the secondary level. Let's say their prep period is period one. That's where the teacher essentially would do their preparation. In a full-capacity situation, that, while that teacher is on preparatory time, is being utilized for classroom instruction by the, by a different teacher, if that makes sense. That capacity listed there, Central High School is nineteen fifteen. East Campus, twenty-one fifty-five. And Justin Garza High School, twenty-five sixty-six. Current capacity at Garza is twenty-seventy-three. Next year, expecting two hundred more students. So we are certainly inching close to the CD definition of capacity there. Now, comfortable capacity is different. We've had dialogue with our school leaders at all three campuses. Also administrative experience on what comfortable capacity looks like, feels like at those high schools. West Campus is about fourteen hundred students, Central High School, apologies. And then East and Garza respectively, between eighteen and nineteen hundred students. Transfers, a question came of how many transfers are going into Garza right now? From last year's numbers, a hundred and four in total, fifty-seven of which are inter, coming from outside the district, forty-seven internally. And Ms. Young's office provided some more data. I think over a hundred and eighteen were, were denied transfers because of impaction or otherwise. Happy to answer any questions regarding that particular area unless you want to move over to a different part of the, of the information. Dr. Boatright has the next area. Is Mr. Ikbal? Sorry.
Well, let me, let me ask, let me pause for a second. Would the, would the board like to ask questions to, to Assistant Superintendent Collegian's portion yet? Or would you like to ask that once at the end?
I'm fine waiting, waiting till the end. If then, we want to take public comments, and then the board can have questions, discussion.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The budgets. If you look at your paperwork, there's an attached budget for Option One and Option Two. Again, if you look at both options, it has two parts. The first part is staffing, startup, and programs, and, and what, what does that look like? And the second part is, is about upgrade of the facilities. And again, with facilities, it is in two phases. The first phase is upgrades. And then the second phase is a little bit more heavy lifting and heavy, more detail, building, repair necessary, upgrade necessary. Now, when it comes to funding, usually either it's going to be grants, categorical funding, or lastly, general funds. So that's, those are the sources we are looking at to support all those necessary budgets. And then the other question we had is, can we borrow? Yes, obviously, we can borrow funds if the board is interested. Or, you know, we can look into, again, creative funding to pay some of this cost. The next issue we had is boundaries. We, should I? No. Okay, we have started to work with Power School regarding, regarding the boundary for Shields and Brawley. That's the elementary school. Again, if we can expand that boundary mapping to elementary school, if the board requests. This time, we are working with Power School to come up with the timeline and what the process is going to look like. And one of the things that the Power School has kind of shared with us that when they do the boundary work, they look into neighborhood school. They look into the socioeconomic distribution. They're looking into the busing concern, Title I standard, and demographics. And at the same time, we will make sure that our Director of DEI is part of this process so that she can evaluate some of the equity issues. So once we have more direct timeline and, and process, we will share that with the board. Thank you.
There was also a question about the participants, and you'll see there that we had over five thousand responses for the survey. And then you can also see there the breakdown of the participants between students and parents and our community members, and also employees. And then also, the timeline for this to go into effect would be the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. When we're looking at Option One, we would need to consider student interest, also a robust marketing campaign. And then looking at Option Two, then we would be adding in the conversations and discussions, consideration of boundaries.
If I can add also, not on this, but in a question I received, wanted to, went back into prior agendas and decisions made. In September of two thousand twenty, when the new high school... into prior agendas and decisions made in September of 2020, when the New High School Transition Committee had convened and brought recommendations forwards, a decision was made by the board. There was a, a motion that was made and, and approved what they called option one at the time, which was that Central High School, formerly known as West Campus, would be standalone, but would continue to share athletics and VAPA program, and that the East Campus and Garza Campus would be their own full program as well. And then following that, the boundary work did commence to establish boundaries for the, the two locations, East Campus and Garza. And at that time, in October, the decision was made to approve those boundaries for the two locations, and also in that approval that there was one option that Central High School would be a school of choice. Again, still making note in the comments of that, that at that time, the East and West or Central High would share both arts and athletics. I will make note in the comments, there certainly was discussion by the board members at the time and some questions about how long would it take? Should we want to stop the shuttling and have it separated? And, and a little bit on, you know, estimated timeframe, there was a five-year timeframe that was mentioned. It was also mentioned to revisit it in that timeframe, but I did go back to check because there was a question as to whether or not that had already been decided. And so I hope that, that is of help to you. Didn't receive any other questions than, than what we had shared, and certainly we want to be a part of, of any other information that might be needed, and, and then certainly recommend that this return for your action and determination so we can begin our next steps.
Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
I don't have any at this time.
Comments and discussion from the board. Trustee Correa.
Yeah, thank you for that additional information. I do have a couple of questions. I don't recall if I asked this aloud, or I was just thinking it during the last meeting, but it was timely based on our public comment as well from Ms. Gray. So when the board made the decision, when, however long ago, to have Central High be a standalone, one of the decisions that we made was to focus our dual enrollment program there to attract students. With that change, how is our programming going to change across the board for other campuses? Since we're no longer going to be targeting, we're going to force students to each campus. There's some transferring ability, but there's going to be caps to that as well. So I'd like to make sure that, that we have a plan, even if it's just like a draft plan, as how we're going to be dividing our dual enrollment and the needs for that. The other thing is I appreciate the breakdown of the two phases and the, the draft budget. If the goal is to have this planned by 2025, does that mean we're going to have a fully functioning program? No more shuttle buses? We have an athletics program, and we're going to have expended the eight point six million to complete both phase one and phase two? Or what is the proposed budget, timeline that's being recommended by administration to complete both phase one and phase two?
Based on funding for it, it's going to take more than one year or eighteen months to finish, and that was the, the discussion of as much that can get generated following a decision, if the decision is, is moving forward to establish, as well as you saw some notes or in our conversation about outreach to students, and, and Jackie may want to add to this in a minute, about programming. So depending on which option fits best, or, or, or a third alternative, if whatever the, the board provides direction on, finding out which programs we have students that are interested and enrolled at that school to open up first could change the order at which some of the facility is addressed. If there are students that are interested and we know the teams that we could start right away, that, that could be helpful in putting together the phasing of it.
So I know that the board hasn't taken any formal action, but please correct me if I'm wrong, board members. The consensus is we're going to proceed with option two. I think the whole point of having the discussion, and my previous comments during the last meeting of, we've had this discussion before. I know what actions we took. You've, you've informed us of the previous actions, so this is not a new conversation. We knew we'd be here again. I think we all collectively can say in different words or, or phrases that the only option we truly have is to redraw our boundaries in order to ensure that we address the capacity needs that we've heard from all of our students and our staff in our community. I mean, right? Am I misunderstanding? I think there was consensus that that's what we're going to do. So I just want to make sure that we all know what our budget constraints are, and, and how realistic it would be that we're going to be able to receive any grants for some of these projects. I mean, a lot of it is going to have to come from our general funds.
I think the, if I can jump in and please help with it too, that when, when the reference to grants and those that are listed are actually funds that we have already received, that would be allowable to help lift things like a pathway, or some of the services for expansion of the arts. So AMI is a grant. We are already receiving funds for some arts, and there's an allocation for each year. So what we were trying to suggest was for some of these big moves, that it wouldn't come from general fund, but we'd look to some of those grant sources, but not thinking we're going to go out searching and try to write grant applications. So clarification on that, hopefully.
Thank you for that clarification. So I think for the next word meeting, what I would like to see would be a budget allocating where those funds are coming from, because I think if we're going to be realistic and intentional about this change, we're going to have to allocate those funds. And if, if we, the money we have now, whether it's coming from general funds, or whether it's coming from some of the grants we already have, we, we need to allocate it, and that's our commitment and a reflection in our minutes, that that's the action that the board is taking so that we don't find ourselves two years from now saying, well, we can't complete the funding, we can't complete this plan because we don't have enough funds, and we know we're always short on funding, if that makes sense. Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Mealy?
Yes, thank you. Also, just to follow up on Trustee Correa's information, or what, what she's asking for too, is, are, do we know what we're going to anticipate as far as population growth, both for apartments and the homes being built in, in that area? Are we, are we taking that off of the city's plan, or I'm, because if we're going to, when, I mean, obviously, we're going to have to do boundaries, but are they taking all those, all that building into consideration so we're not having to revisit this in two or three years?
When we, the Power School did our demographic study, and they have incorporated all the housing expansion, everything, so when they do the boundary, that will be part of their process to include all those when they do the boundaries. So they have that information already.
So how, how does that work? Do, I, I know there's a big apartment complex that's going to be built, and all, I think around, around four, four hundred homes over on Shields and Brawley area. Do we already know more or less what the population's going to be? Is it going to be middle school, high school? What, what are we getting?
I think in, in our, we, we did a demographic study. In that study, I think with expansion, we had, we had some numbers that showed what schools will have a, a larger population. So we did, we do have a study. So that would, I don't have it with me right now, so we can share it later.
I think if I can add as well to your point of development, though, we are trying to, and I, I know John's in constant contact with developers, because what we see is, is the, maybe the city makes a decision to change some high density, or to change and, and move up in order, some of the projects. We've seen that happen this year, and so trying to keep tabs on that, because they may, they estimate for five years out, and there may be a project that was not supposed to have started yet, and so we don't have realized numbers of, it's expected at this type of dwelling that students are typically young age versus high school age. They try to project that, but if a project moves and, and up in the queue, trying to understand its impact is why the demographic study gets done every year, rather than doing it only in five-year increments, is to try to catch those things as best we can.
Do we know if the sphere is going to extend westward more than it already has? And, and do we have a, do we have any idea when that's going to happen?
I'll look into this. I don't have the response right now. I'll look at this.
I, I want to just interject one, one piece of information too. I think, you know, Amir talked about, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent McCall talked about the demographer study. So, you know, a projected ten-year trend has us growing, you know, by about eleven hundred students by, by, by that time. And this is, you know, a kind of a moderate projection of when they take into consideration, you know, building out west and the birth rate in the area. So we cert, we certainly are trending up distribution-wise. You know, it shows the cascading effect from kindergarten all the way up to the, the secondary school. So there's certainly a balance of, of need in, on the horizon. I think the opening up of veterans as well is going to bring developers, I believe, out this way.
But with that, my question was, I don't see anything on this plan incorporating that cafeteria, and, and I would hope to see something like that, because there's definitely, that definitely needs attention. Whole bunch of money being spent on athletics and fields and uniforms, but what about where they eat? Secondly, if we're going to have a home ec, there are no, there's no ovens or, what do you call the hoods? And so when they cook in those classrooms over there, the fire alarms constantly go off. There's nothing incorporated in here about a facilities upgrade as, as that, as, as well. We have a lot of kids that take home ec classes and things of that nature. So that's definitely a need that we need to be concentrated on. And then secondly, because we don't have enough money, and I'm not sure we're going to get, be able to pass a bond or do a bond, what type of loans have you been looking at? And are they, are they, because I, I know that it's not that common for school districts to take out loans, but I kind of feel like we expect everybody to come and save us, and sometimes we have to save ourselves. With that being said, what type of loans and what type of interest rates? And I'm sure there's loans that are probably forty and fifty years long, based on the way our system works. We're not a profit center, but I, I, I do believe we might have to borrow some money to get some of these things done.
In the past, the school districts take in COP loans, COPs, which are called no, non-water approved loans. So that's something we can look into, and we can see the interest rate right now. I think the interest rate is going down, but again, we, we need to see how the funding works, what, how do we pay it, and what's the loan's going to look like?
And the terms and the length of the loan.
Yes, yeah, we have to look at that.
I think that's all great information that we need to have, just in the event that we have to resort to borrowing some money to get this done. Our, our taxpayers deserve it, our students deserve it, and we have to figure out a way to get it done, because obviously, we're going in a different direction. The mentality of bringing more dual A classes to Central didn't work, right? We have fourteen, and our enrollments going down. And yet, we're neglecting our other two high schools in that aspect, which is not fair to the taxpayers or to the students of those schools. So we're going to have to reinvent ourselves, and again, as I said last meeting, we're going to have to be very, very creative. I don't think anybody's going to save us. Again, we have to save ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Solis?
When we have the presentation on the demographic study, make sure the presenter is looking at what's going on locally. I don't mind listening to state trends, but to tell you the truth, when I'm making decisions about Central Unified, I really don't care what's going on in Bakersfield. Okay? In past presentations, there was some confusion about that. As far as funding goes, I hate to be the crude voice of reality. People in the public have already started talking to me about this. Folks, we're going to be coming to you probably with a request for a school bond. Okay? So I mean, we, we have things to do. Our district is growing. We're moving forward. Unlike a lot of districts in California, our district is not shrinking. We're growing. And to do that, we have to provide quality facilities for this community. When I first came on this board, I went out to some facilities, and teachers had buckets catching water coming through the roof. I always tell that story. Okay? So we started with fixing with what we had, and then we started moving on with extra facilities. We have one facility that they, we've already broken ground on. We have another one that's going to be coming up with that. The reality, which some of the board has accepted, is that we're going to have to do boundaries. The question is how many times we need to do it. So we need to put a fix in now for our community knows what to re, expect and make, can make decisions for their families in the best interests of their students. And to do that, we need to give them information. In other words, we're not going to be changing boundaries every year. We need to put a fix in that's going to last for a few years. That's it. Thank you.
Trustee Sellers?
Yes, thank you. Based on the, what I'm understanding and reading here, options one and options two are financially going to be about the same cost?
Yes. There's a little bit of difference on the branding and, and Justin Garza. Yeah. If you look at option one, it, it has a hundred and fifty thousand for lunch supervision for Justin Garza, adding staff, and then marketing, a hundred and fifty. So that's the difference, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. I'm going to be honest, I know I'm not in the popular vote here. I like option one, keeping Central High School as a school of choice. My question is, I know we've briefly touched on it, but what have we done to market Central High School, speaking as a parent? My son, who is a freshman right now, the interaction that he experienced was very minimal. I'm curious if that was just, if that was a fluke experience, that there's things that he missed, or are we saying that we are actively marketing the opportunities out there with very minimal?
So I know that Central High School has done quite a bit with marketing. They do send their counselors out to the middle schools to talk with students. There are campus tours where students are invited out there as well to see the facilities. They've talked to students about the pathway options, about the dual enrollment options, about early college. There are parent nights that are held, also to invite those families in to see the campus. So that's some of the marketing that's been done.
Okay. From my experience, there, he spoke to a counselor one time. He got one field trip to Central High School and to one field trip to Justin Garza High School, and there was one parent night that was offered, which I did attend, and many questions went unanswered. So for me to sit here and say that we've done everything we possibly can to promote the school, the school of choice opportunity, I don't know that I agree with that statement, but that's just my, my personal statement. Going back to Trustee Solis's comment about a bond measure and redistricting, we have a new elementary school coming on, and there's another proposed elementary school, possibly middle school. All that discussion is still yet to really happen. At that point, we are going to be potentially drawing new boundaries again for those schools, correct? If I, yeah. And me being fairly new on the board, I was not here for the conversations of previous boards, but was the intent for Central High School to be a school of choice with athletics?
The decision that the board made, how long ago? A year, two years, three years?
September twenty twenty.
Okay. Three years ago, was for it to be a school of choice with no athletics, and we would revisit. The concern then, that I recall, and please add your comments, whether we would be effective in actually attracting so many students to, well, for lack of better terms, break even and upgrade and continue to invest on that site, but we also recognize that those are not our best facilities. That's our oldest school. We haven't added any additional development, so we didn't know how successful that would be, and, and we're seeing the impact of that now.
Do you think that the lack of athletics out there is turning away students? Do you think that the lack of athletics out there is turning away students? That if the athletics program was developed and established, like in option one, that the student enrollment could potentially be more applicable to what we're looking for?
Maybe not to that level, but I think it's definitely going to help enrollment. It's offering more services to students.
Trustee Solis?
I understand where you're going with this. The reality is the numbers. Again, be the crude voice of reality here. For Central High School, we're looking at, we need a minimum, and I'll say a minimum, of 200 new students, possibly 300 students to be moved over there. Now, we have tried the sales pitch, and even if we try hard, and the staff's into it, and they're really pushing out, trying to sell Central High School, you're only going to come up with maybe 50 students. So that's not going to get us where we need. Your question about athletics, yes, it will sell that. Historically speaking, on that site, the community has always supported the athletics out there. So if you put an athletic program out there, they're going to support that because they're going to have ownership of that. And in other words, they're going to have their high school there, and they're going to come out and support their high school. They've always done that. So they will do that again. But that's not going to get you the numbers you need. Again, in my calculation, this is only my opinion, you're looking at, you need at least 200 more students out there, bare minimum. And so the only way we're going to hit those numbers that we need is to redistrict. Now, when we redistrict, you mentioned the elementary schools coming on. Those are feeder schools to that. Depending on what formula you use to redistrict for the high schools, there's different ways of doing it. One of it is trying to preserve community. That means you put the feeder schools that are close there, that have that community in common, and have them to go there. Central is unified, which I already know you know, is a little different. We don't have, like Kerman, a city there. About the only thing we have is Biola, okay? Because of where we're, about where we're there. No, that's pros to Biola. I mean, because with that, you have a sense of belonging. There's the community of Biola. We're not like other school districts, that there's that city sitting there. So because of that, one of the things that preserve community, and staff can speak to that if they wish, is that you have the feeder schools go in, and those feeder schools go, oh, they're going, oh, we're going to start going to Central High School because we're the closest feeder schools to that. So you can design it that way. You can design it street populations. You can project what's going to happen. Because, I mean, there are projections, depending which one you want to use, what's going to happen now that Veterans Boulevard is open. Okay? If the growth's going to go there, it's going to go a little farther down on Shields, depending on what maps you're using. But either way, or the end result is, we got to get a minimum of 200 students over at West Campus. And the reason for doing that is, again, maintaining the historical precedence of that campus. There's a lot of rich history out there. That community out there has supported this district for a long time, and that campus still has to stay viable. And the only way we can do that is, like I said, we're going to have to move some students over there. You want to discuss the number? Staff can discuss the number. Like I'm saying, just my opinion, from the math I did, you're looking at a minimum of 200 students. Really, 300 is where you want to be. That's it.
Trustee Sellers and trustee Krefan?
Thank you, President Singh. Building off of trustee Solis's comment, I want to emphasize the word minimum, 200 minimum. My problem with option one is, like Admin said to your comment, that they have been doing a lot to market Central High. And according to our trend they provided to us with information, it's still decreasing in population. Option one is just doing what, to me, it sounds like we do what we continue to do, but we're just going to throw money at it and hope something changes, instead of a new tactic with new solutions that's going to actually equitably distribute our student population and keep Central High School at a safe, you know, at a healthy population, and Justin Garza at a safe capacity.
Trustee Sellers?
Okay, thank you. I'll skip this one. My next question for the district is, how do we handle overcrowding at other school campuses?
We handle overcrowding at the elementary level by overflowing students. For example, this year, Saroyan Elementary School and Madison Elementary School are identified as the schools to take in students when the other elementary schools are impacted. For example, as you know, Harvest is growing in numbers. And as they register students there, they, their overflow school essentially would be Madison Elementary. So we look every, to every spring, summer, to make changes in where there is capacity. For example, we're discussing Ladell being an overflow school next year to help with some of the overflow issues we have at Harvest Elementary. Our middle schools have been stable, although we, you know, the numbers at Glacier Point Middle School are higher than both Rio Vista and El Capitan.
Yeah. Thank you. The other comment I was going to make was trustee Solis's point there of feeder schools, that again, if we are going to draw boundaries here, are we calculating into the future what those feeder schools may potentially look like? And that will be the new boundaries? Or are we drawing boundaries based on today and then potentially redrawing them again in five years?
I'm going, so the answer that will be provided is, we're going to try to take that in consideration. My experience has been, based on, you can see the sort of map that has at least most currently got us into this situation, that wasn't that. Right? So in terms of, and this is the importance, and I'm just reminding my colleagues, this is why we need a vigilant school board. Like, the reality is, the purchase of the land that brings Justin Garza High School and Central East High School that close together probably was less than vigilant school board at that time. Just to sort of round up on some of the comments, and just even for completion, just Assistant Superintendent, can you just, because you provided a number and it's there for the public, can you just share a little bit about sort of the difference between inter-district transfers versus intra? And just kind of share a little bit about sort of how the numbers, how we arrived at Garza? And for completion, even though you may not have it, to the best of your ability, what might those numbers look like at Central East? Just for completeness sake, your best guess?
So currently, as we discussed Garza's number, there, Garza has 140, 104 transfers collectively between inter and intra. Inter meaning students coming from outside of the school district. Intra refers to within the school district, essentially from, you know, in this particular case here, Central East to Garza, totaling at 104. The numbers at East, I don't have in front of me, but I know they're significantly lower than the numbers that are going into Justin Garza High School. I think when we consider transfers, you know, of course, we have, we have policy that identifies impaction when it comes to approval or denial of a transfer for both inter and intra. Those are, you know, room availability at the school site, what the attendance looks like for the student, positive attendance essentially, grades and positive behavior history as well, all play into the policy that will allow for the approval and/or denial of such transfers. I think as we move closer into what we're seeing, what's happening at Garza right now, I don't think we have a choice but to cap those now, or to cap Justin Garza High School. I think we have to really consider what, you know, 2,300 looks like next year at Justin Garza High School, from what we know what 21 feels like. And as the numbers are, you know, fluctuate for Central High School, if we know they're going to be approximately 100 less than they currently are, then we've got to look at staffing for how to help Garza. Because essentially, we're not growing significantly today, although we are seeing upticks in enrollment. We have to do our due diligence to move staff with the students. And I think that's the biggest challenge in having the school of choice, is not only with athletics, if we were to establish athletics with the school of choice, but also with the staffing. The staffing's always going to move with our students. And with stable populations, it's, I guess the term is easier to do that. And I think when we speak about establishing athletics program in a school of choice, the fluctuation of having staffing for, you know, for coaching purposes, to be able to have a, one team kind of matriculate through, you know, through freshmen to varsity, if you will. I think getting, you know, student interest is critical from the population that's there. I think those current sophomores, juniors, and seniors would have voice in what that looks like, to create program for them. But it would also mean that we'd have to end the multi-school agreement we have with CIF that connects Central High School today with Central East Campus. I think we have about 90 student athletes at West Central High School currently that are competing at Central East High School. If we were to move towards establishing a program there with a school of choice, ending that agreement would cause some concern there.
Thank you. Superintendent Davis, did you wish to add to this conversation?
So my recollection, actually, very much similar to trustee Correos, but was actually that we spent quite a bit of time talking about branding. So I actually think that there was the idea very much that we would at some point create sort of sports. We never assigned a timeline to it, but I think it was, you know, we had a conversation, who were going to be the Grizzlies? And so I do remember us spending time, at least talking about the consequences of the branding and who would inherit what. So that was at least part of that particular conversation. I mean, I think that, you know, the challenge is very much there in terms of to, we have had repeated conversations about one lunch, two lunches of different districts, you know, and that is very much tied to what our enrollment, our inner capacities are on those particular campuses. I mean, I think, you know, whether we have a unanimous decision, or whether we have, you know, different sort of opinions amongst us, I think it's sort of clear where we're, it looks like we're more likely going to be headed. The conversation of how to get this right, are we making sure that equity is important? Some of our parents have sort of shared to make sure that we're doing right for all of our students, including some of our high-performing students, making sure that we're providing needs and supports for our new immigrants, for those that need additional support. I think that's going to be an important conversation, probably part of the cost that we also haven't computed, just as trustee Cervantes alluded to in terms of when he talked about hoods and other things that would be, for instance, required to really revamp Central High School campuses. At this point, I'm just reminding everyone, it's an information item. Ultimately, we have to provide administration with direction. You know, there's a timetable they're leaning into in terms of to make sure that we have this, you know, sort of prepared. I mean, obviously, I kind of shared a little bit why I think we're specifically in this problem in terms of our two major high schools in terms of the proximity. But I don't think any of us purchased that land. That is the reality of the, of the sort of geography we inherited. But, but as best as we can, we have to just make sure that our students are safe, our students are supported, and to make sure that our belief to create a school of choice, at least at this point, and under this circumstances, has not worked. So for me to make sure that our, just as our athletic opportunities are available on our campuses, is to make sure our academic opportunities are available on all of our campuses as well. So open sort of discussion in terms of next steps, because we do need to give administration some sort of guidelines in terms of what we'd like to do. Trustee Correa?
So administration is recommending that this item returned for action to the next board meeting. What I'd like to see is, what is our plan for our dual enrollment courses? Thank you very much for the budget. This is really helpful. I'd like to see what that impact is to our overall budget, and where that funding is coming from, or proposed, where the proposal is that it comes from. And then the specific timeline around phase one and phase two for option two, because I think for the past three years, we've tried option one. It isn't working as much as I wish it was, because I hate to have to force students to go to a school that clearly they don't want to go to. I think that's what the numbers have shown us. And then a timeline as to when we can expect that demographics report. Right, and the financial impact to CIF? That would be my request.
Superintendent Davis?
Just a couple of clarifying points. I heard your discussion, and with respect, we didn't move forward on the boundary piece of it, because we really wanted to understand clearly from you when we brought back answers to questions, how we would proceed. We have begun the work for Shields-Brawley and setting up the timeline. Would the board be amenable to us bringing for action the item of establishing it and initiating boundaries, and use sometime at the next meeting, the facilities workshop that's February 20th, and then continue the program? Because I'd like a little time with some of the questions you're bringing up around program to initiate some conversation with those campuses. We can certainly answer some of the budget work. We planned to at the facilities workshop, but we did move that to February 20th, and so that would come after the 13th. Looping back around, ultimately the question is, are you comfortable to make a determination on the recommendation of initiating option two with boundaries in advance of having all that information? And if not, then we've got to look at the timeframe to do that and may, we want to get into more of the cash flow discussion and that information during the facilities workshop as well. But we don't act on items during those workshops.
So we're not, we're not taking an action item, but they are asking, oh, sorry, trustee Milling?
I'm sorry. Just clarification. So if we take action to start the boundary process, it gives us at least a framework of what we're looking at, and that'll be available for February 20th?
Well, what it does is it initiates the work that started. We're establishing the timeline right now to get Shields and Brawley going. And if the board takes action, we would recommend that that happens so that we can, in the timeline, also include middle school, high school. And we wouldn't want to do that prior to your action being taken.
Okay. I'm pretty sure I understand. So I just want to confirm for me, if we take action and say, yes, we want to move forward with the boundary discussion, that's the map we're going to receive and will be available for February 20th? That's, no?
No, it begins the process. So we do public input. We would go over the timeline, but we'll include, when we bring that forward in February, we'll include the larger scale, not just the elementary Shields and Brawley boundary.
Okay.
I think the, to add to it, I'm just thinking, in some of these program questions, I don't want to speak on behalf of the group that we need to get together in the next two weeks to make sure that that was embedded in for your decision to be at option two. So the question is, can that decision be made while some of that information is still being gathered?
Trustee Correa?
Yeah, just to further clarify, the, when the item returns for action, the board is then providing approval to proceed with the next steps in adjusting the boundaries. But any discussion about the boundaries is going to be more than one meeting, because we're going to get public input. And I can, I vividly do remember how I felt during those discussions, and the disagreement among the previous board members, and the inequities that existed when we redrew those boundaries. So I want to make sure that, just as administration is asking that we, I have asked that we have sufficient time to make this decision, that our boundaries is not something that any of us on the board are rushed to do, so that we get it right at least for the next three years. And then when we have the reality of the development around us, having to re-decide.
Trustee, trustee Krefan?
Thank you. Yeah, echoing trustee Correos's comments, you know, I'm not sure how much time the previous board had, but I would definitely want more than a week of like, seeing the boundaries and being having to approve at that. seeing the boundaries and being having to approve at that meeting, you know, definitely having, I'm not sure what timeline would look like for looking at boundaries and approvals.
Sure. Let's see his question. Trustee Cervantes?
That process should also incorporate the public, whether we want to or not, because they deserve to be heard. But with that being said, I still would like to see a tentative plan for enhancing the cafeteria and some of those homemade classes, whether or not their CT, because they had a great CT program out there when I went. Um, is there some additional monies that need to be spent there? And then also classroom modernization, because right here I see three million dollars to upgrade a snack bar and the restrooms at the football field. I love football, but I'm more interested in the kids' outcomes. So if we have resources in the classroom, I think those should be put first. Not that I don't think that we shouldn't spend money upgrading our fields, upgrading, uh, scoreboards, things of that nature, but I do, I don't want the academic side or the school, the student side that don't play sports to be neglected either. I think it's very imperative that that's included in the plan. That's a recipe for success. It's not just the football or the basketball or the baseball or the athletics. It's it's the whole pie.
So in general, so what what I'm hearing is that that this item, uh, in terms of our formal decision, would return as an action item to our next, uh, to our next scheduled meeting? And is there generally a consensus from the board to move towards moving toward, to give, uh, administration to start the process to open up their their current boundary conversation to to look at larger impacts?
Yep. Yep.
I, there have been a couple of questions on boundaries, and so we will bring a timeline forward for you, and I want to assure you that it is a process. To Trustee Cervantes's point, there are at least four meetings that are held, um, showing all different options, as well as being open for discussion on what those options were. And in the conversation, as Assistant Superintendent Ickball mentioned, um, he was, um, communicating strongly some of the desires of the, uh, the information available for each of these boundary configurations, so you could understand and see what would be the makeup of the campus if lines were drawn this way or that way. The process is is necessary that public see it, and so you would be seeing it multiple times as well, and and a part of that discussion, um, would would happen over time. Uh, it would be expected if we are starting now, as he has said, and we're adding in the other layers to it, that we would want to throughout this spring be bringing updates to you, so that it could be decided before the school year is over. We wouldn't want to be doing this work during the summer, when our families may not be as as connected to their school campuses, so, uh, but certainly a more specific timeline to come.
One other clarifying question. Um, you mentioned that we're working with Power School this year. Is that a different company or a spinoff of?
Okay, thanks.
I think it's a it's a different company.
And 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 for us to, especially for those of us that were on the board at that time, and for those that are new to to ask these questions, because we did not get it right.
I just wanted to, um, accolade, it's on, I wanted to accolade our, the board. I think this conversations are incredibly healthy, and I think that the dialogue was outstanding, and I don't think we do it enough. You may not always agree, as Mr. Sellers alluded, he likes one, but it it's the really critical to have this conversation and this dialogue, and, uh, sometimes hearing things from other board members actually opens up, um, your thinking process. So I I think it's incredibly healthy, and thank you, um, to the rest of the board for this. I I think it was incredibly important and powerful. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you need me to repeat the directive or? You all got it. Perfect. Thank you. Next, we move on to, uh, and thank you for the discussion. Um, we move on to information item number three, receive information regarding resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-seven on the issuance and sale of twenty-twenty-four refunding general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed twenty-six million. Assistant Superintendent Ickball.
Yes, good evening again. We have Mr. Mark Farrell. He's going to talk about briefly about this refunding process and the resolution.
Good evening, President Singh, Trustee Superintendent Davis. Uh, good to be back in front of you this evening. Uh, so this is kind of the continuation of, uh, the discussion the board had back in November. Uh, we brought the information or the idea about potentially refinancing the bonds. So you have in your board package, a copy of the resolution, uh, the preliminary official statement, and then a a couple draft legal documents that are largely blank. Uh, those would be the numbers, and those two documents, the escrow agreement and the bond purchase agreement, get filled in, uh, once the bonds are actually sold. Um, uh, so far, uh, the financial markets have been cooperating since the the board meeting on November fourteenth. Interest rates came down kind of in November and December, uh, kind of as inflation cooled and kind of the markets started feeling like, okay, the Fed's going to start lowering interest rates in twenty-twenty-four. Um, so the savings have improved. I think we were around one point three million dollars in savings back in November. Uh, current rates were about one point eight million dollars in savings, so, uh, a nice improvement. Um, uh, from here, um, we would be looking with the board's approval at the next board meeting, uh, kind of in the March timeframe, we'd be updating the district's credit rating. Um, mid-April, we would be able to lock in the interest rates, so at that point finalize all of the savings, and then the financing would be completed in early May. And happy to answer any questions. Questions, comments from the board? Trustee Sellers?
It's simple. Do you anticipate the interest rates falling even lower than their current?
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, the interest rates don't move in a straight line. They've kind of come up a little bit the past couple of weeks. The, you know, feeling right now, um, Goldman Sachs just released, uh, you know, kind of a report of their opinion that they expect the Fed to cut rates four times in twenty-twenty-four. So the expectation is in twenty-four for rates to start to drop. Um, it's just kind of a question of, you know, how quickly and, you know, typically, again, doesn't go in a straight line. So, you know, if if, you know, we get a couple of good reports where inflation is cooling, we'll see rates drop. If something happens and, you know, hiring picks up and a little bit of inflation, we might see rates pop up a little bit, so it'll be a little bit of a bumpy road, but the the trend right now is at least aiming down. May I ask Mr. Farrell, like, in in terms of, uh, the timeline provided at the at the last page of the 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 materials that you provided, um, it it, at least at present, it looks like by January twenty-twenty-four, you would require a board director to proceed with a voter opinion survey. Oh, so this is the next presentation? Oh, sorry, that's the next slide. My apologies. Correct, sorry, I I jumped ahead, my apologies. I did. Uh, if no other questions on this item, um, then we can play this this on the action agenda for the February thirteenth, uh, board meeting. Thank you. Next, I move on to receive information regarding general obligation bonds. Uh, Assistant Superintendent Ickball.
Okay, again, Mr. Farrell, we'll, uh, kind of talk about the potential information and key timeline regarding the bond. Again, um, it's information sharing, and then board has the last decision what they want to do. So, Mr. Farrell, keep going.
Do we have? Oh, oh, that's, I think you have it in the.
You pointed to that one, you should.
There you go. Okay. Okay, so, um, I'll try to be very brief with the history, but, uh, as you know, the board or the district has passed five general obligation bonds, uh, going all the way back to nineteen ninety-two. Um, the Measure C bond in twenty sixteen reauthorized a portion of the two thousand eight bond. And then, uh, you know, we know that the two failed bond elections both happened in presidential primary elections, uh, put the bond back on the ballot in the November presidential, and both, uh, passed. And whoops, I just hit the wrong button. The, you know, that is, um, kind of what we see really throughout the state and here in Fresno County. So on this slide, on the left, we have voter turnout by election. And so, uh, the kind of light gray are primary elections, the dark gray are gubernatorial elections, and the blue are presidential elections. Um, and what's odd on this slide is the dates have changed by a month. It should be June and November, not May and October. Um, so, uh, but the, you know, what we see statewide and here in Fresno County, higher voter turnout elections generally correlate with stronger results for general obligation bonds. So here in Fresno, about sixty-five percent of bonds pass on president or on primary elections, about eighty-three, eighty-four percent in gubernatorials, and almost ninety-five percent in presidential elections. And that's really voter turnout. So, um, kind of voters that are least likely to vote, that are only coming out and voting in presidential elections, they tend to be younger, um, they tend to be supporters of schools and school bonds. Uh, the district's assessed value has continued to grow very strongly. Um, it's kind of talking about all of the development and the new construction in homes, um, is helping to drive that. Uh, over the past, you know, five years, whoops. Yeah, over the past five years, grown an average rate of six point seven percent, six point one percent, going back twenty years. Uh, our assumptions or the numbers we're using for our projections are very conservative. We're only assuming, uh, three and a half percent growth in the long term, uh, five percent next year. So trying to be very conservative in the assumptions when we're projecting out how large of a bond the district could ask for and what, uh, future tax rates would be. That said, assuming that five percent growth next year, the three and a half percent growth after that, um, you can see kind of the projections of the tax rates for all of the bonds that have already been issued. And what you can see is the tax rates start to drop off after twenty-twenty-six and continue to drop off. If assessed value grows faster than that three and a half percent rate, those tax rates are going to drop more quickly than we're showing on this slide. But what that does is that allows the district, if you would like to explore putting a bond on the ballot, would be to, uh, put a bond on the ballot that wouldn't actually increase the tax rates, it would just extend the tax rate that the community is currently paying. Uh, and with that, we'd be looking about a hundred and nine point two million dollar bond program. Um, you can see, we've kind of assumed, uh, three series of bonds spaced about three years apart. Uh, the reason we do that is kind of their spending rules, uh, generally need to spend about eighty-five percent of, uh, of each bond series within three years of issuance, so we kind of try to, you know, lay out a program, uh, that would, uh, kind of have those money spent during that timeframe. These, uh, kind of dollar amounts and the issuance dates, those are not set at the time of the election. Uh, the board has discretion, uh, once the bond passes, uh, to pick and choose when you actually issue the bonds, uh, the dollar amounts of each bond series, so that's something that would come back to the board before every bond issuance. Uh, what, uh, is kind of locked in by the voters is that total dollar amount, so that one hundred and nine point two million, that would be the kind of the maximum based on these assumptions, um, that would be, uh, included in the in the bond measure. There's one, uh, kind of provision in the education code that limits the amount of outstanding bonds to two and a half percent of the district's assessed value for, uh, relatively speaking, smaller districts, for growing districts. That tends to be a challenge as you're trying to get ahead of your enrollment and build the facilities you need. Um, often, you kind of start bumping up against that two and a half percent limit, and that has been the case here in Central Unified. But there is, um, because it is just an ed code limit, you're allowed to go seek waivers from the California Department of Education to increase that limit, which we did back for Measure D. Um, CDE increased the limit up to four point six eight percent. Uh, it gave more than enough room to issue all of the Measure D bonds. But how the waivers work is it's only for a specific bond authorization. So if the district puts a new bond on the ballot after the bond is passed, then we have to go through that process again with CDE. I would expect, um, you know, depending on assessed value growth and how quickly the bonds are issued, maybe looking at asking CDE for something around a three and a quarter percent, three and a half percent, uh, limit, so quite a bit lower than what was asked for with Measure D, because the district's property tax base has grown so much since since then. And then thinking about timeline for a November twenty-four election, um, kind of the first thing we have on on the the timeline is really just kind of the the community outreach that the district would do, talking about the various facility needs, um, kind of, you know, dovetailing with the previous conversation. Uh, if the board would like, um, with your direction, we could start working on a voter opinion survey. Uh, we have done that prior to all of the prior bond measures. Uh, it just gives the the board information on kind of what the community's thinking, uh, what they feel about different potential projects, uh, what they're feeling about kind of the potential tax, uh, rates associated with the new bond, and kind of the overall potential level of support, um, for that bond measure. Uh, we could, uh, start working on that and actually probably have that in the field sometime February, March timeframe, uh, then be able to bring the results back to the board in March or April. And kind of kind of working, um, really kind of in parallel with a lot of these these activities, so kind of April, May, uh, kind of finalizing that project list, uh, that would be included in the bond measure, the dollar amount, and start working on the actual legal documents that would come before the board for approval. Um, that could happen in kind of the May-June timeframe. And giving ourselves a little bit of 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 kind of time there, the county, uh, we don't need to file the resolution with the county until August ninth, so there's a little bit of time built in, but, um, knowing things get kind of, uh, uh, sometimes there aren't board meetings in July, those types of things, uh, try to plan to be, uh, kind of done in ahead of the game in in May-June. If something happens, we can always, um, you know, potentially have a special board meeting, but, uh, again, trying to be, uh, done with the process early enough that that August ninth deadline is not a problem. Uh, the election is November, and if needed, um, the district could be issuing its first series of bonds sometime in early twenty-five. And so happy to answer any questions, and I went through that pretty quickly. Well, thank you for answering mine during the appropriate period. Any other, any other questions from Trustee Sellers?
Um, for my information, it's a fifty-one percent yes?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five percent, okay. Um, I, you probably don't have the numbers here, but can we get the the voter turnout for the twenty-twenty election, how many yes votes were cast and how many noes?
Yeah, I I don't have it coming out of memory, but we have that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, and then the other option, you're talking about extending a bond measure. If we were to extend our current bond measure, as you said, was a would bring the district another hundred and nine point two million, how long does that extend it out?
Uh, so, we go back about twenty, twenty-five years, roughly, twenty, maybe twenty-seven, if I can look at my chart. Uh, yeah, about twenty, I think it's about twenty-seven years.
Okay.
Roughly.
Those were a hundred and nine point two million.
Hundred and nine point two million.
Okay. Uh, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Just just because, Mr. Farrell, you you may have it, so if I understood your question correctly, uh, Trustee Sellers, you asked for the percentage that the, uh, bond in twenty-twenty passed by, the number of folks that voted yes?
Uh, just the overall total, how how many voted for and how many were opposed?
So so that, Mr. Farrell, does have, um, that's on slide two? Yeah, it's sixty percent, but in terms of the actual numbers, yes, I can get you the actual yes and no count. And we might, and I can get you a rough idea, if if not the exact number, I can get you a rough idea of the turnout. Um, yeah. Other questions from any other board members at this time? Thank, thank you, uh, so so much, Mr. Farrell. So we will then, I mean, at this point, sorry, for our next, yeah, it's going to be then come to action for our next meeting. Thank you.
And just for clarification, the the item is coming for action to proceed with the survey and then further discussion as to whether the board wants to add this to the ballot, right?
Correct. Thank you, thank you for clarifying. Thank you. Thank you. Item, next item, information item number five, receive information on Justin Garza High School Aquatics complex change orders for bid packages two, three, five, eight, and nine, and thirteen. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis, uh, for your information tonight, or change orders and the attachment summary for. tonight, or change orders and the attachment summary for each item for the multi-prime contractor packages on the Justin Garza High School Aquatics project for your review. The change orders are changes for work not included in the original contract scope of work and are necessary to complete our project. I have reminded the architect of their change order responsibilities and their commitment to a mutually beneficial business relationship with the district. Staff has reviewed and recommends approval of this item to return for action on the February 13th, 2024 board agenda. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Coria?
You alluded to this, but just for clarification, all of the change orders are changes that were necessary and were omitted from the plans? None of them are changes that we're requesting?
Not all of them. So if you look at the attachment we have, where we had some items that were not needed, so obviously, we wouldn't go back to the architect. But anything that's, that they aired or omitted from the scope, we will definitely be going back. They, they've been on, put on notice, so.
Do you have a dollar amount?
No, I don't. No. I'll have to, it'll be subject to the agreement that we have with them, and I'll bring that back as an information item.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
If no other questions at this time, we'll return it back to action for our next meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
Can this be added to consent? Or do folks want it under action?
Very much open.
I mean, we have very little power to say no. The consequences are significant, so I'd recommend it come back under consent.
Consent it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move on to advanced planning.
The calendar is attached and is being updated. So I know there were some requests for future presentations, some adjustments to board policies being brought forward. And then just as a note, we did change the special workshop from the 30th to February 20th. So invitations have gone out for that.
Additional information, any closing comments? Trustee Coria?
Yeah, if there's consensus from the board, I would just like for administration to follow up on the comments and questions related to the GATE program and specifically the funding, if all our school sites have a GATE program or how that works. I mean, a Friday report is fine unless the board wants an actual information item, just so that I have a better understanding and if there's any actual formal discussion or action that the board needs to take for this item. Thanks.
If no other comments from any board members at this time, I just want to remind the board and of course, members of the public that our next regular board meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024. 6:00 p.m. for closed session, 7:00 p.m. for the public session here at the Central Unified School District Office, Room 4. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Heard trustee Cervantes first, I heard trustee Krefan second. All, it was trustee Sellers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed may. Those upstanding, we adjourn 7:00 at 8:54 p.m. Thank you.